And there's a presentation in their package.
Yeah.
That sounds like you were basically all you need to know.
You go over there and you sit in emergency room for three, three hours watching everybody that's not sick.
Go ahead.
We'll go first.
And then, you know, that's nice. I think you could die in there when they really get too worked up about it.
What was like?
Did you see it coming?
I didn't see it.
I'm working on something.
Okay.
All right, just.
So I know.
But no, I didn't.
I'll see him.
He's like. They don't pre-ack anybody.
My wife went, she worked in the first year, so she had watched out of it. Just come there. We had a cold. Yeah.
Hold me to go first. Will take roll call first.
Or a rusty guy.
I know Doc got you all up. Okay. Roll call.
Yeah.
Really, yes. Doc.
Yes.
Steve, yes. And Sheriff. Don't get me. I'd like to read to the flag of the United States of America. To your republic. Stands one nation under God. In this world with freedom and justice. I need a motion to approve and or amend the agenda. But also in. Well, I guess that's it. Got a motion to approve that's all. Move, move and second. New discussion. Sheriff.
Yes.
Steve. Doc. Paul. Jim.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now I also have a motion to approve and or amend. Uh, consent agreement. Amendment. Seems to be the last meeting. Um, yearly resolution for appointments. Fuel adjustment. Transfer resolution and NOCA allows 10,000. Now, uh. Points. What we have listed would be a dock pro tan. We're agreeing for that. Uh, Chris, city administrator. No, it's got your name on it.
Oh, I think maybe you grabbed your. No, I don't.
No, the one I seen on. But anyway.
Sorry.
Well.
We'll correct that.
We'll get that corrected. That'll be Jeff.
Yes.
Uh, Kent for city clerk. Liz for deputy city clerk. Um, Dave for police chief, unless you're not a stewardess.
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, Ray.
He's got a chance to get out.
Yeah, that was it. Really for city attorney advocate for the, uh, potential publications. And, uh, premium availability authorization for kids. That's what I made. Need a, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Second. And a second. Need further discussion?
I just would like, is there such a thing as like an algorithm formula for that fuel adjustment cost? I think it's still kind of a confusing thing to me.
Yeah.
I understand this is just a transfer of it, but.
Right.
But, but to actually see it, I just, I mean, I look at it like, all right, I look, I look, I look.
Yeah. Does it ever go to zero? I think so.
Yeah.
But there's.
But yeah. Is there this cost that the water and sewer department have to pay for their fuel? It gets divided by how many gallons we use. And it never will pay us back a hundred percent. Because it goes by the gallons of the sewer and the water is how we calculate it. But then it only gets applied to the water gallons. So we never get it off. It will only, I mean, you'll be lucky if you get half. It's not meant to. Yeah, get a hundred percent cost back.
Good, I think I understand, but I always say a little confusion.
Yeah. And it is, and it is confusing. So like if the, the utility bills for the gas and all that stuff charged, cost of water in the sewer department, five thousand. But we used a hundred thousand in water and a hundred thousand in the sewer, obviously. Then that amount gets divided by the 200,000. But then it will only get applied to the water gallons that you and me use then. So it's never was meant to get a hundred percent of our money back. And the electric department, electric, they do the same thing. They have that fuel adjustment on the kilowatts that they use, which is, yeah, how they got it to you. What the process of getting it to the people. But it never really pays them back a hundred percent either, obviously.
Makes sense. I just have never seen it actually, you know. It, it looks like it should be, you could draw it out pretty simple in a, in a formula, but I. Sit here and look at it, I'm like, well, that might have to be on the wheel a little bit, I think, right now.
And then, and two, if you ever look at it, because Elizabeth takes all the bills that she pays for them. And then we run a report that shows how many gallons are not filled for the month. And we divide it all out. And it's on, it's on a spreadsheet. If you're ever wanting to see it.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's funny, yeah, it's, it's a little more curious about it. Read through it.
It is weird.
Yeah, yeah.
It is weird, yes.
Feel like I just repeating itself, but wait a minute, well, read it again.
That's, uh, Richard Gordonberg.
Yes.
It's been around a long time.
Yeah, well, he kind of got that idea because we realized that the electric department was doing it. Why can't we do it?
But that's not going back to the customer, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, you're building.
It's like, it ends up being point zero 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 seven eight or something. It's never even a whole penny. And then that's another thing on our sheet that says if somebody used 2,000 gallons, how much extra it would be. When it's 4,000 gallons, how much extra would be, and it's. Obviously not great, not a huge amount, but it does vary. Depending on what the light plant had did or what the water department had to use for that month.
And, and it does go like when energy prices were really high a few years ago, it, it.
That's where it came from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the, the idea, so when everything comes down to the prices.
I think it's going to sweep back up.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be. I'm down.
Can we, any, any further questions? If not, we will hold on up then. Sheriff. Steve, yes. Doc? Yes? And Doc?
Yes.
Motion carries. Citizens. Going to appear. Seamus. Becky.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
I don't know. I'm, I'm, well, these days I want to get there in person. Um, I, I don't have a whole lot to report. I know we're, you know, we're going to try to fill up, um, that block down, uh, um. By the convenience center with homes. And I, I know we're, we're really looking at getting some more industrial, um, land. We need that. We, we only have 13 acres now left, so, um, I know that's one of the things we're going to be looking at this year to do. So, and I, I got a community fact sheet, we have to update that, and we've used them all, so. Um, I'm working on that to update. I think I'll send you guys a copy of it. Um, I've already changed a bunch of the stuff and, um, but, you know, if, if you, if eyeball something that is a mistake, we, you know. I can always use edits. So. That's where I'm at.
Okay. Any questions for Becky? If, yeah, come down and join us. This has been a good night.
I bet. It's okay, I'll wait till the snow goes away.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Becky. Uh, legal items, I don't know any, Kim. Chris, man. Um, point correspondence, we do have a thank you here from. The high school, old high school class of 2022. Uh, for donation to the prom post prom. And we do. So I don't know any correspondence. Um. Mayor items, one thing we included in, uh, Chris and I went down to the fire boards meeting. Last week, was it? Couple weeks, couple weeks ago. Anyway, we went to it and we had a very good presentation with, ask the copy of the new, their notes today. It's kind of interesting that they got. You know, they're looking at 25% increase in their, their calls, most of them being, um, EMS calls. So, you know, it's a busy, busy group. They have, um, I think 29 members and I can't remember how many it's. Um, EMS, but it's, they have pretty good coverage. There's times they haven't had, but now it's pretty good. It's not quite up to full status, but it's getting close to there. Um, the other thing, there is pictures of the new pumper that they've got on order. Which should be here next month, I think. February, they were saying, I think it's.
It was March, it was, it was running a month late. Whatever the, whatever the original date was, it's been a month late. So, I don't remember exactly.
And they've got the old one for sold for 50,000, so.
Yeah, so it's mid-February, and then they have a two week transfer period when they're selling their.
Uh. I don't think. They go, they go through.
Yeah, that's why where I got it from. I agree more.
So, and they've got some other things that they're thinking about doing that. That I have things to do, it was an excellent meeting. Um, I was very impressed with how they had everything like a business sense put together. Yeah, Sharon, you were there too. Uh, you were on the. Did you, Tim? By his phone?
Fireboard.
Fireboard. Okay. That's him, dude. Somebody's helping me get him, not sure who that was. They done a really good job of. They got a business sense, how they approaching things now. They are putting things down, they have leverage for things, they know where money's coming from. What's happening, so. Uh, it was very refreshing. Very happy to see.
How are they absorbing that 25% more load for the work zone? Is that something that we get funded a little extra for, is that, that worth it?
For me?
Does it help with their funding in any way, or is that not necessarily?
Well, they're starting to charge. Where they're supposed to. Uh, we had the first check for $500, because if you even look at, even look at your. Home policy, it's got, I think it's $500 for every fire call to your home. That's every policy. Well, we had not been collecting on those. Whether they started collecting now or where they're saving them, so. They're having it. I think part of the thing, like a few more members, so that helps a number.
Sure.
But the EMS, they're, they're just skyrocketing. They have at least about one day.
Now, do they have to pay for their own training?
We, we pay for the training.
Yeah, we do.
We started off through a couple of weeks ago.
Med, medical supplies and training are probably the two bigger line items on that, on the budget.
So, but anyway, take a look at any other questions, we can considerably answer that. Um. Read my notes. Oh, last big note. Jack Russ was here, was that resolved? Anything further on that?
Well, we need, we need a committee together, we need to have a committee done on.
We should try to do that sooner or later, but we're back.
The feedback was, was the staff wasn't elected for policy, that's now, I mean, that's, that's in your.
Would you?
That's gonna be, what?
Jackie was the one on that.
Oh, I know, yeah, I didn't think about John Carter. No, we haven't had any more. Put on that.
It's only thing, wasn't it?
It was only.
We looked it up.
It's not known by that.
It's not really. It's the same zone in Herman's Bowl.
It is.
Did you let him come over, did you let him know, or? I haven't, no, I, I, I didn't, I don't, if he was gonna contact, that's what we was.
We always send something or give them a call.
Okay, alright.
And John Snyder's the other one.
Yeah.
And that's the one, the department, one of the committee members of the group. The water committee, he's on.
Getting out, I don't know much.
That you are.
Hello. Jack, credit, Chris.
Yeah. Other than John Snyder, who do you want to get together on that, Chris?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll.
Okay, I know Steve's.
Yeah. Is that something we can just, we'll go on and then set it? It doesn't have to be that complicated as far as, uh, like a one-time forgiveness? You know, like bring it to a, like effort on agenda that actually, and then. Well, some of the, I think, we talked about last time, we thought. Was Chris, you're gonna look up, see if any other towns around here had anything in there? There's, there are, there's similar, they're back to it, but, you know.
The other thing is Steve, it happens and there's so many different sets of circumstances, and it happens so seldom. But we can beat on it. And just have something in black and white, because it's probably, each one has a general.
Only have a couple of white. And the next one, your next one, that's. Here. I think. I, I think it's very different in that place and it's. Gonna be fair, you can call it fair, so. I have a night come in and I get my bill forgiven for $200, and the next guy comes in. It's a thousand dollars and I, well, shit, that guy got a thousand dollars, I'll come, I'll only get $200, don't you? You're, it's not gonna put it into any complaints. I mean, it's, it's just gonna be different.
That, that's why I think it should be each one looked at individually.
Yeah.
But whatever. You could put something in there too. I don't see any reason really where we should have more than one. In other words, you know, your 10-year period time, I, I, I think we would, we would like. In my opinion, you might want to consider it one month. You know, now if it happens a second time, you're just, you know, we, we bend over backwards to help. And that doesn't, I mean, need to be a hundred percent, I don't mean that, but. I don't think you want to set the precedent that every time you don't pay attention when you head south for the winter and you have, or something. So that could get to be.
Well, the, the first thing could not, maybe would not fix the problem, so the next month we have it again.
Well, it's just, that's where I just think, you know, you, well, if you had a time.
All what happened with John was that. Being that we read kind of a month behind.
Right.
Is that he got the first one and it was only up. 10,000 gallons. And so, and then the next one, it ran the whole month and it was 20 something, 25 gallons.
Well, it was, but even then, there, when you get there, did finally come. You know. Where I can see where we give a, you know, where we can give a forgiveness for. But I think that means that you have need to have a limit of wait, how often you can do it for a bit.
But my, yeah. One thing I was gonna say is, I was gonna talk to Robert and see if there was a chance.
I just think, I think this is bad, I think our policy right now is black and white, and we don't have much of that. And John Snyder is a good example of that, so you got. John's actually, first one wasn't enough to really trigger the, the warning. But the second one was quite a bit fire. Well, do you forgive the whole thing, or do you forgive one month and not the other one? You know, and then what if somebody has a situation where, like you're saying, they're gone to the winter and they're gone for three months and they.
Why, why, yeah, I think that's.
Was it the society as a council?
Is it three months?
Well, no, the government's not been fair a whole lot lately.
Right.
Life's unfair, so that's kind of the way.
Right.
Uh, so are you, so they, like, they gotta submit an application to the council every time, you guys gonna hear everyone?
Oh.
I don't need that often. How many you hear? Depends on how big they are, I mean, if you talk about.
And they're gonna find out that we're gonna do that. They're gonna come up.
Well, I suggest we have a committee, we'll discuss.
Okay.
I have a thought on this. I have a, hey, this is Jeff, I have a thought on this. Um, my experience with this was that when the city had a one-time policy. And you told people that, of course, is that. For the smaller ones, a lot of them just didn't apply for it. Because they knew it was. Uh, if it was like, I know, we had a few people have smaller ones that just goes not to, so. I think generally. People know it's a one-time thing and they don't reach unless it's a decent amount of money.
Yeah. Well, we're now a committee, uh, Jeff, you're probably a publicist. John said.
Yeah. And I still do think you need to have a policy that the excuse that you can't read your own meter. Should not be precedent saying, okay, I can read my own meter. I didn't know the leak was stopped. That shouldn't be already set.
You don't look read your meter.
You shouldn't.
Because you look your dryer, it's not our fault.
That's right.
You locked in your meter.
And when we send those notices, we tell them, start reading your own meter. And they go, well, I can check it, because I can't, whatever.
Like you're building the headquarters, I mean, you wouldn't believe.
Yes, and then I'm sure there are advanced spots, especially in the older home, but. That doesn't, that shouldn't be an excuse of why they didn't catch their leak.
Well, it's a, we'll get, we'll get some staff in, but we'll get the committee together.
Yeah.
You know, and I'd like to have a water, like, the stuff on that, because. If we could do something where somebody's got that and they've got their high read, and we go by the next, the next week or two and just go by their house and read it. And look at it with our reader. We could say, hey, this is not slowing down. You can, you can give them a heads up.
This is a dumb question, but is there anything on that computer program that you can. Say, make a flag, anything that's up 50% or something?
It is built in there.
It is built in.
Yes. We actually, we have, we have two reports. We have one report that comes out that says people have an intermittent leak and they have a continuously leak. Then we send a note to the continuous leak ones. And then we also have another report that's just, we call it a variance report. So if Bob Barrett used 5,000 gallons last month and now also he's using 10,000 gallons. And it wasn't necessarily came out on the leak report, it'll come out on that variance report, just that he doubled his water. So then she sends a note for them also.
But a lot of times too, that's after the fact.
It is.
I mean, you don't solve the problem by explaining that.
Now, another thing, I went to a class on, they do have repeaters or. Towers that you can put up in your town. And I have the guy looking to see how much it would be and how many we would need. And at any minute, any given moment, I can tell what. His damage is used in for water.
And you folks.
Out of the office. Out of the office, I can tell you. So there again, with the leak thing, you know, I can see where people want to know if it's stopped or not. But so, Kim sends out 30 of those things. Are we gonna drive by 30 houses to see if the leak, if the leak quit? And it didn't. So are you gonna go back a couple more days? Go by again? We got those repeaters put through the town.
Yeah, but I know, I, I was gonna say, I've seen the guys drive around a lot, not that they're not doing a job. They can drive by, and I was just a quick, hit that.
Yeah. But I do think that that might be something you guys might want to look into, that we.
Yeah, the beer sounds, that would be, if we give it, we see what the cost is.
Yeah, and I got, I got the first guy looking into how much those would be.
That's a good idea.
And you can put it right on your computer.
And, and maybe a little bit of education on how to read the meter, not, not everybody knows.
True. But, and it does say that on, on our little cards. It says, got a flashlight. Then you kind of go to sleep if you're not using them to save the battery. So if you actually want to see it, you gotta activate it. And that's the same thing in our.
Yeah, good, yeah. That's a proven deal, not wrong as I. I've seen her as a perfect example.
Anyway, we can, we'll get back together.
Okay.
Gets a couple other mayor things, uh. One, I got. The guy, he's speaking. Please let him know, I think they're gonna really hit down the snow removal. Um, we did not forget. Take care of it, so I think they're doing a good job. So another guest tonight.
We did do it on Facebook. Kevin.
Rafi is actually going around right now, making as much contact as he can. Uh, his last tech knew that there was about 20 cars throughout, throughout the town, so. The majority of them are actually downtown here, because there, I think there's some confusion, because the signs aren't out there. So emergency doesn't exactly affect them. I'm, I'm not sure where that confusion lies, but, um. As he's been driving around, he said there's about 20 cars roughly spread out there around town that he hasn't been able to get moved yet. Um. Trying to, we should try and get that done, and so far I've only received one phone call about it. Somebody wondering what to do. We gave him some suggestions and although it was not, uh. Convenient for him, he did find a way to get it done.
Anyway, yeah, we've been doing a good job. Keep it down, open. Um. The library is open now, correct?
Yep.
You, you know what the homeless are?
They're the normal. Their website.
Okay, that's good.
They get you close tomorrow morning, gotta depend on the storm.
Yeah, sure.
Let's, let's understand.
Who was close to that? Or is it?
Okay. Other mayor things, oh, Dave, do you have anything to add on from the police department?
No, I sent everybody an email. I don't know if y'all had a chance to look at it, it was our call numbers from. From 2020. Uh, just kind of summary of, of how we're doing, but. Quick synopsis, I guess, uh, 2020 was certainly a trying year for everybody, but no more so than the law enforcement. Um, it's, we were a shortened, gaudy year. So we had. Here we're gone for nine months and then pop without, we're going to begin a year. Um, for surgery, they had going on there. Uh, when I did that, I was surprised, I was sitting there doing the calculation for. The time that both of those people were gone, he had to cover 352 hours per month. With part-time staff, and for those who couldn't cover it, myself and Yassin covered them. Uh, and then for the remaining six months, when it was just here for gone. Uh, we still had to cover 192 hours per month. Again, Schmidt, Bowers and Lane covered the majority of that. What, uh. What they couldn't cover, we did. Um. So, uh, you know, very, very happy, very pleased. Uh, specifically with Rafi when it comes to, uh, his. Being flexible with his schedule, certainly accommodating, uh. As I put in that email, he, uh, exemplifies what it is to be a team player, because. Lord knows we worked him all over the place. He was doing eight-hour turnarounds to this, to that, to twelves, to whatever, he did a really good job. Um, our problem, when I mean, we were up. Uh, 20%, we ended with, uh, 2004 and 2003 most of the service last year. Which is a 20% jump from the 2054 that we had the year before. Qualitys has been a little bit different, um, it, they're certainly a lot more challenging. Uh, I also added in that, uh, a COVID directive that I. Wrote to try to mitigate risk and keep the officer safe. And a jail intake form that was submitted from the sheriff that. Certainly had some restrictions that we had to work around, um. But going into this year, it's, it's. Tough to lose hot again, he comes back, even, even from the school. Uh, even being up to school, he, he's a huge help, you know, he, he covers.
What happened, he slipped and broke his?
He was out shoveling, yeah, he was out shoveling his driveway, um. Uh, he slipped and that's a lot of man falling down on, on one way. And he broke his tibia. Straight through, uh, he ended up having a plate and several screws put into his leg. So, last I talked with him, best case scenario, he's looking at four to six, uh, correction. Up to eight weeks roughly before he'll be able to come back to light, maybe. So the school does have some things that he can, you know, roll, one of those little new cart things, put your leg on and kind of roll around. So they have, I mean, it'll, it'll be wild if he was able to come back to the street and work for us. But in school, he's able to kind of roll himself around a little bit. There is some, there's gonna be an extensive learning curve for him to get used to the new position. And he can do that, um. I'm hoping mid, like, February, he'll be able to kind of get in and get that done. But, yeah, it's just the healing process. It was a pretty bad week.
Any questions for Dave? No, how about council? No, how about council?
I just had one thing that just struck me actually right now as we're sitting here, 'cause I got a message from the whole community. They're probably telling me that they don't have school tomorrow. Wouldn't that be a great way to communicate to our citizens when we have a snow emergency? Through like a text, a mass text like that. You probably don't get any of that or never had your kids. Your kids are too old now. But uh, you know, it tells you when the rain starts, when they get out early. And heck, I get them from you and I from my daughter's. I don't know what, I know we've kind of moved into the twenty-first century with the iPad and some of this other stuff. I don't know how big a deal or not as big a deal, not tech, not tech service is. Cause you have everybody's number. Somewhere, I'm sure it just has to be, well, to a point, not everywhere, but people would have to sign, you have to approve it and have to sign up for it.
Right.
But it's a.
I think at one time we even talked to the school to try to coordinate maybe that we could use their services a little bit. And I don't remember how that ended up.
I don't either.
I don't think it would be.
I, I know some towns do it.
Yeah.
Would be an easy way to announce a snow emergency. Yeah, any kind, yeah, through storms, everything, poles. Or, I don't know, that, that must on thing, but.
We look into it.
Is Bow on something? Yeah, there you go. That'd be a good idea. The area, this area may be affected by discovered water. It would be a nice message.
Or when we're flushing. Anyway, take a look.
Okay.
Everybody carries their pen. But a lot of them, I might don't. I don't have. Don't really say despite, but I don't like Facebook, so I never go on it. So you do have a certain segment of the population that doesn't go online and, you know, receive notices that way.
Sure.
Just maybe something we can do that.
Yeah, I know, I know we looked at it a few years ago and it was really expensive, but I, I would imagine Brexit would have it up here now. What's your tip?
We set it up when I was with Lisbon.
You did one at Lisbon?
We set it up then. I know about it. It's Nixel. It's fairly easy to do. If, if there's some cost to it that I can fill you in more, I'll look, and I'll get some numbers for you.
Okay.
Good deal, thanks. Anyone else?
You know, we have bills?
Oh, I, I, how did the busy shore thing turn out? Cause they, what did they find in that, you know, they've worked on that history for a long time. What did, what did they find?
They, they got it online, which is what we're a little concerned about.
All of this street?
Yep. So everything, all the sewer on Fifth Street should be lined up.
And, and a lot of that carried, bills carried into this year. Isn't that how that works?
So we have kind of a, we have a deal with them that we have a hundred thousand dollar a year, you know, budget for them.
Right.
So they basically, when they're done, it, when they're done, they did the lining and the lining, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we paid you a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, then they're gonna come back and do the drought. It'll be another forty-five, thirty-five, forty-five thousand, something like that. So then they'll.
Okay. I knew there was some way we should cut that up.
Right, so they'll do that the next budget year. So this summer, and we'll pay that in July or August.
Do we see any sections that weren't looking, when did you create it?
Well, there were. I mean, that was one of the reasons we wanted to make it online.
Alright.
On that, I think it was side of the patch was fairly bad, but it was it wasn't bad enough they couldn't line it, but they did go on a lower pressure uh to clean it just because they wanted not to be able to. And they said, you know, when they do that, sometimes you don't get the bite of the cleaning, it's not as perfect. You know, so you get some more imperfections in their line. So we, we don't think that's gonna be a problem at all. It's like, well, it's, well, but it just won't be a, a good lining.
But I see in bills here, a hundred thousand dollars is coming through. Just out of curiosity, they're great guys and all that. Does anyone else do this?
Yeah, there's out there.
Just wondering if someone, keep them on us or?
We have, uh, I mean, when we originally bid, they were, they were a low bid, like quite a bit. And in my research, this is the better.
Okay. So. Well, I mean, I told you, I started a group guy.
Yeah. And nobody will do what they're doing for us, like, you know, they'll, they'll do the whole job again. You know, a lot of us retract our payments.
Later.
Yeah. Mine, I'll pay later kind of thing. So I, no, I, nobody else would do that at all.
No. Okay, just wondering.
And they've been, they have been very good with us. Bobby or Robert kind of keeps track. He has some, when he goes to the sewer water conferences, he asks around, yeah. We, we do try to make sure that they're not gouged or sort of thing, and so far they haven't.
I mean, they're working some crazy out.
Right. And I don't think that's when they, they'd rather do it this time of year than in the summertime. They have, I guess it's more of a problem with the salt and salt. When it's hot in here, it's harder to do that. I, I don't know, but.
But you see that they got it hanging up, way up there.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna go through, I guess. A lot of works.
They do a good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I asked about that. I was like, do that in winter time? Oh, yeah, I would prefer to do it in winter time.
Okay. Basically the ground's frozen around.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, it's more visible, obviously.
Yeah. I, they had these blowouts happen occasionally. Like, we had one last time they did it and they had to pull liner out and re-put it over here. Evidently that happens less than once.
Okay, any other questions on the bills?
On the bill? I was just wondering, what is the, if I can read it here? Um, it was a, it was some dinner thing, uh.
That's why he's going to Academy.
Academy, what is that?
It's, it's, it's food.
Yes.
Oh, we don't, we don't win it.
Alright. I, I, I didn't understand what that.
Took me a while to read through it.
And you guys can always email or text us on the bill, see some, you don't have to wait for it. When you're going.
I did.
Yeah, you did. And Doc does a good job of that. So when you're going through them, if you think of something just right, text me and I'll we'll get right back to you. I like that, that's a good way to do that.
Anything else? Now I'll take a motion to pay approval. Turnover, move second. And Doc. No further discussion, we'll vote. Doc?
Yes.
Look at it.
Yes.
Ah, Steve?
Yes.
And Cheryl?
Yes.
Motion carries. In the screening items, COVID vacation resolution.
So there were several of us who couldn't get our vacation taken. Not that we couldn't necessarily, but I know we had canceled several trips up to see her mother. Uh, I canceled two trips. You know, I had one canceling where we stayed, but I canceled another. We got, Ken looked around and noticed there were other cities that were, that were paying out the extra vacation. No, 'cause we have a policy that if you don't, you can carry over a week, but after that you'll lose. So if you got two weeks, you lose a week. You can carry over one week. So this year we just had a number of people that just were not able to take all their vacation. So we talked to the mayor and said, well, what do you want to do with this? And he said, well, why don't we just change it for it off the books?
Get it off the books.
So, so Ken did that, and she found another city that was doing basically exactly the same thing. She got the resolution.
Would it be a, even let them carry two weeks over?
I mean. Well, you, you could, but then, you know, a guy like Robert, already gets five weeks.
Yeah, and he's got six or seven. So you run in the same, just curmudgeon.
Yeah, I, I'm not for that. But I.
And this would be a one-time thing. It's not like we would want to keep doing this because I think that's
it's all in that COVID protocol that they recommend one way.
Yes.
Right.
And we still may have carry over their week. We didn't pay, pay them for the week that they carry over. And we're still encouraging them to take that week and.
That week's gotta be gone by April first.
Yeah, April first. So we didn't pay them for that week. Anything above that, um, and I had them sign them. We paid them for, uh, you know, and like you said, it wasn't only the fact that you couldn't go anywhere or venture. We were short stacked.
Yeah.
Then, you know, we had a person that had to stay home for ten or weeks, and we had somebody else that, oh, now they got exploded, they have to be gone.
Those have to stay home with the kids.
Yeah, so even when you had one plan, you had to cancel just because we're short stacked. And the guys are the same way.
We just physically couldn't do it.
Yeah, you just physically couldn't. Cause we're already short stacked.
Well, take a motion to move in second. Any further discussion? Not for both, Cheryl?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
And Doc?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I think that was, I think that's a good way.
Of course, we also had a short timer once again. Your list taking.
I'm not concerned at all about it. It actually was my idea.
But I did speak. Budget update.
Okay, so, um, I wanted to give this to you. This is a little spreadsheet. Uh, yeah, put together on the, on the general fund. And I'll kind of update you on the other funds as well. So we're getting to a pretty decent place in the budget. Um, so.
I suppose you can take a look at that too.
So the general fund, this is the general fund. I want numbers. So right now, we're running a deficit of uh seven thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. You can see that at the bottom. Jeff's done these at the other cities, so he's kind of, this is kind of the process he's comfortable with. So he put this together for general fund. Um, that's not uncommon for us to be our first draft of the budget. The general fund that we're in a deficit, and we go back through it. You know, cause you know, everybody's kind of curious to do and ask. That's when you're gonna get everything you ask. So we're, we're pretty happy that's a pretty small number, actually. I mean, I first got here, that number was a lot. That's one of fifty thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars. So, uh, we're pretty, we're pretty pleased with, with that process so far. The tax rate, last year's was just a little over fourteen twenty per thousand. Uh, currently we have the tax rate at fourteen, uh, nineteen and some change per thousand. So it's roughly a half of, of cent less than it was last year. Uh, currently, that's what we have projected for our, our, our tax rate. And that's, uh, given that our, our general fund revenues, our general fund uh assessment basically went down just a little bit. So, um, uh, and that's probably for a couple of reasons, but one of them was because they jacked their way up last year. I think that they basically just did nothing with it this year. And also we added the downtown area as a TIP district to pay for our downtown of the facade project. And that came on the books as well too. So that took some money off the books that normally we'd get for the general fund. So our general fund dollars are actually down a little bit from what they were last year. Tax rates staying basically the same. And we, we've always, and I say we because I, I think we're all in kind of agreement on this. We can try to keep this rate as consistent as possible for one year and not they judge one way or another.
I think a good sign if we can, even go down just a little tiny, that's a sign we're paying attention. Going ahead. What does loss stand for? Hello, Steve?
Um, local option sales tax.
Okay, thank you. I know it wasn't lost.
Right now, you, you take the loss revenue, uh, and it goes into, half it goes in sewer improvement and half goes into uh the general fund, right? Uh, from the receipts we get. So those are just, we just have a projected number on the loss revenue and then we split it half. Um, that's a general fund. Well, and generally what happens is so on, on the, on that side, so FICAN hypers and your health insurance benefits, uh, mainly FICAN hypers. The number that we actually levy for that is a really low amount. And basically what you're doing is you're taking that loss revenue and paying your FICAN hypers with what it's going to do. So rather than having to tax for that whole amount, you're only taxing for a fraction of it. So that's, that, that's primarily, I guess, if you want to look at a number, that's where it's going forward.
Well, that's, that's, that's great. You look at the total expenditures and so forth and just, that's almost eight thousand that you're, yeah, parentheses, that's not much.
No.
It's pretty good.
First draft.
Now, where does debt service need to come out of?
So debt service is second level.
That's a separate.
Right, and that doesn't include TIP dollars. So if you look at our form, the valuation of the city of Wilkens is a hundred million dollars for a general fund. The valuation for debt service, because there's no TIP included in that, and that's true for the school district, accounting, everybody. Uh, when you do debt service, TIP doesn't, that's not included there. So like the high line out there, we tip that, all that, we get all the tax revenue from the county, the school, and the city goes to that, and that's paying for the street and the sewer and the water that we put in out there. But the roughly twelve million dollars of plant worth goes on the debt service side, not on the general fund side. So the valuation to the city for, for
Okay.
debt service is a hundred and twenty-five million. And that's our, the general fund valuation is a hundred and twenty million dollars.
That TIP for them is ten here?
It's fifteen, but they don't get a rebate until our debt is paid off.
Okay.
And I think we paid the debt off in, in seven years. I don't know how many years left on that. It's seven or eight years.
Too many, it's been out for a long period of time.
Right, right. And I think, if I remember correctly, I think it's a hundred percent for the remainder of it, up to a circum amount. So once they reach a circum amount, it's, if we get fifteen years or not, that's all they're gonna get. So, but we, we get paid first. That, that was kind of the deal.
We got paid first.
Yeah.
That could be, but, but it's, but it's always a year behind, I remember.
We were through it.
Right, yeah, we were probably three, maybe just slightly fourth year.
Well, I'll tell you, they started operations, I wasn't there yet. It must be six years.
Okay. Right. So and it goes on the tax hold after it's played, so it's already done. And then they put it on the tax hold, and then it's the next year you actually get the money for it. So it's, you know, you could be almost two years behind when then he's actually started to production, but when we actually get anything from just by the way the tax system works, so. Anyway, um, those, I think are a couple of good signs. I just wanted to give you an update on a couple of other things that we'll uh, we'll be looking at. So as far as uh deficits and, and surpluses, the uh health insurance fund was, was at a, a surplus, a small surplus. The uh, the biggest one we had that's, that's had a negative was road use. And Bobby wants to buy a street sweeper, and they're about a quarter of a million dollars. So, um, that puts the, that's, or the, the road use fund at about a hundred thousand dollar negative on the year. Now, there's a balance there of four hundred and some thousand dollars, I think. So, you know, one of the things that we try to do with that road use fund is build it up over time and then pay something out of it, and build it up over time, pay something out of it. So we've got a healthy balance there, that's not a critical thing, we would be negative a hundred and some thousand dollars in that. And that's kind of how it's designed out. We could also, that's, that's pay cash for the street sweeper. They've already expressed some interest in us in doing the same thing we did at the back, which is if we said we do a three-year lease to buy, we're up for it. So we might be able to, we won't have to do the negative at all. But, and also you'd have to prove a sweet street sweeper, so just because because we budgeted, it doesn't mean you gotta spend it anyway.
That's right.
So, so all that's still in play. Uh, the other thing is, last year, we did, we started a, a thing where we were gonna, gonna bond for uh, take a loan for a hundred thousand dollar a year, when basically rotated around different departments. So police got, uh, two cars, gun, and the initiative really updated their, their department with that small loan. And we're doing it kind of as a bridge, we're also you borrow it. The idea ultimately is to borrow it, let's say in, in March, and then pay it back in July. So you only got a few months' interest on, on the loan. So this year would be public works as a chance. Uh, we put it in the budget and we got, we decreased it down to eighty thousand dollars just so that for our, our debt service levy, we didn't want it, we cut that out. So we would take a loan out for eighty thousand dollars and we thought we could use it for improvements down at the shop down there. We have to do some re-roking of the residential. Um, we had some, minor damage to some of the roofs. They're old anyway. So they could do some concrete down there, um, maybe add on to the plastic area where we, we store stuff. Or, or maybe they get one of, some more equipment out of the ladder, something like that, so. But, and then the idea was the next year would be another department, let's say a community center. Like a community center without, you know, that, their turn. Uh, and you just gotta rotate it around.
And that's ten or twelve years, or two.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's twelve years old. And the, the roof was leaking again when we had the ICM, you know, all the ice, the roof was leaking again. You know, and, and you know, there's some, there's just some wear and tear in that place that's probably gonna need to be taken care of. So you've got that, you know, so the idea is every, roughly every five years, a department would get this chunk of change to go do something that they want to do. And it, and it would, you know, hopefully, you know, then five years later, they get a shot at it, so. So we've got that in the budget too, if that's, you know, right. I think it's, I, I got that idea from somebody else. It's not my idea, but I think it's a brilliant idea.
Yeah.
Keep things updated and keep them moving, moving forward, so. Um, water and sewer were both in pretty good shape. I think sewer, right now water had a twenty thousand dollar uh, um, extra over the budget. And sewer was roughly, was a similar number if I remember correctly. Uh, what else? Oh, garbage was a deficit. I have to probably take a look at that. Um, it's really, seems like it's difficult to keep up with that. Ices of that stuff just go up. You know, land till charges go up, our charges for taking electronics in just keeps going up. Of course, pay can be. March, is that the next? Okay.
Well, I know I went to that land, the meeting where they need a new building up there. I mean, the costs are going to go up.
Right.
Still cheaper than going to Muscatine.
Right. It just seems like costs never, especially in that area, just never stayed the same. They're always seem like they're, they're moving outward and whatever we do. So I, I think it's important that we just keep up with that. Take a look at it again, you know, come end of the summer, make sure we're doing the right thing and keeping that in the right direction. Now, we had, we can, we're gonna look at this a little closer and see if maybe if I underestimated revenue a little bit or overestimated some, I think some expenses. So we're gonna try to get that back closer together, but I think that deficit right now is like seventeen thousand dollars in that fund. We don't want to do that day. So we're gonna look at it. We're looking at it. Not a little. Do that this week. Not a little, I'll do that this week. Um, but we're we're pretty far down the, down the line of the budget. And we've got, we've got from uh, everybody, uh, Sturker stopped in this morning, I think, he dropped his uh, ass off, so, um, so yeah, we're we're in pretty good shape, I think. Just to give you an idea on schedule, so remember last year, we had to do a, you have to do a levy max levy hearing, uh, and then you have to have two budget hearings now, so you actually have to have three hearings. But we've got that scheduled for, uh, February twenty second, you do your levy hearing. And that's the general fund levy hearing. And then the budget hearing would be the first meeting in March would be the eighth. And then the second meeting in March would be the second budget hearing, and that's when you approve the budget. After that levy hearing, you can't change the levy anymore. So so that's, that's the, that's the point at which we're with no return, so you'll set those, I I would suggest at the next meeting you'll set all those, uh, so on the, February eighth, you'll set the public meeting or public hearings. And I was, I might have misspoke, the levy hearing would be February twenty second, I don't know if I misspoke or not.
You said February twenty second levy hearing.
Okay, March eight. Right, first budget, yeah. So basically, you're two weeks apart on your hearings.
Another two weeks probably.
So in the next next meeting, I suggest you pass a resolution setting all three of those hearings at one time. Is that, you'll, and the only other way you can do it is that if, let's say, you want to do a special meeting somewhere in there to do it on a different day, but I don't see any reason why you'd vote. I mean, unless, unless something out of the ordinary happens, that's your schedule.
Yeah, sounds good.
It's good, questions? Make sense?
Is that guy healthy? I'll be hired last time. I got something on Ely. You got, we got all?
Yeah, yeah, actually, we, we've been working pretty hard on that. On the budget, I've been teaching him how to, how to use our our system. And, uh, we we've been working pretty hard on all this, all the past week.
So going back to the garbage, is it a bad time to ask about recycling at this point? And is there, is there anything in the future coming down the line? I've seen some rhetoric on, I did see something on like Facebook, and the people talking about it.
Yeah, I I don't see, I mean, we haven't seen any movement in the market at all, we kind of thought there would be, with you know, the trade war that was going on between China and the United States, they kind of put a stop to taking uh, especially plastics. But yeah, markets have not come back yet, so.
But that did, you know, one in the heyday, that offset some costs.
Yes.
But, uh, it's not there right now.
And cardboard's still hanging, I mean, we're not, I didn't know that, but we're not spending much time on recycle either, so we're, we got guys going through something.
But it's all going out to the landfill.
Right.
So
Yes, so we're not getting back out of it, and we're paying
We're seeing a cardboard machine, man.
That's right.
And actually, we looked into, and what we're currently looking into this is we might be able to get rid of the co-mingle. The the problem, well, the the we we found a place that will take it, co-mingle, but you got to pay the truck in there. And and they don't pay for it. So the idea is that, is that cost effective for us to be able to do that? I I'm not sure it is. Because then we still got to go out and collect, although it'd be easier, but is you basically run the garbage route, clean the garbage truck out, and then go back out and just dump the the, uh, garbage, uh, recycle bins in the back and cycle it, and do, and then you drive it over there and do that. So you basically have to run it twice then, the garbage truck. I think it's a lot. Bobby's looking into it. If he thinks it's, if he thinks it's better than, more cost effective to do that, I think he'd rather do that. But right now, he doesn't fit so.
We'll see in the future.
Yeah.
Anything else? If not, this is Chris's last meeting with us. We do have a little, little dessert to look at up here.
And actually, I plan on recording it at the next meeting, so if anybody has questions, I
Okay, that's great, anyway, thanks a lot. You have a great role.
There's a little
You know, when you add them, you just come down. Well, I can't. But I I'd rather not, it's not my show.
He always comes as a citizen.
I can't, that's right. Yes, as soon as you get your ass back.
Anyway, Chris, thanks a lot, yeah. How was I new standing here?
Yeah, I I've really enjoyed, this has been, I mean, I think for anybody that, um, wants to work in a small town uh, small town government, this will be the day, guys are really good to work with, the town's really good to work with. You know, it's, it's really good.
We try to maintain a little goofiness, but I think that's important.
Yeah, I I've enjoyed it, everything.
Here, have some dessert.
Okay, so I re- I returned that.
Remember this question.
Among
I'm comfortable with, you know, they they have been, been pretty good neighbors recently. No, they've, they've been, I mean